This is the Wapaka area school district board of education meeting.
Call to meeting order. Roll call, everyone's here. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call to order, everybody's here. Is there an approval for the agenda?
Before you do that, I've got a couple of recommendations. One, I'm going to move one of the items from consent agenda up to administration. So, item 11(c)(1), which is the revised policy 422-r1 public school open enrollment procedures, from the consent agenda to Roman numeral nine administrator. I'd like to talk about that one a little bit.
I'm not sure I want to do that.
Please.
That's fine.
Then the second thing, I'd like permission to be a little bit flexible with tonight's agenda. We'll cover all the items, but we have a number of guests in the audience. I'd like to give preference to them in terms of getting them in and able to go on other things if they need to. So with that, we can approve the agenda.
I'll approve the agenda with the changes suggested. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there anybody in the, from the public that wants to talk to us? Somebody wants to tell him, tell us about his arm?
He'll get a chance later.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes from December 8th?
Move confirm the minutes from December 8th.
All in favor?
Aye.
Communications, Dave.
Okay, we have a number of nice donations for the district. I'll list them all and then I ask you to accept them with appreciation. Delta Dental had an employer match. We had a, we have a parent of a student, the parent is Kelly McGinty, who works for Delta Dental, and she designated Wapaka High School to receive the $200 employer match. The Allen and Jody Fox Family Foundation came to me before Christmas and said they would like to donate some money to help make sure that kids get food to eat. So they donated $600 for school meals for disadvantaged students. We'll run that through our social worker and determine which students might be eligible. This is intended to be a, not an ongoing resolution for these kids, but every once in a while, families and kids find themselves in a situation where they're down and they need some help. And so we'll identify those kids through our social worker and we'll see how this program works. I think there will be more money available if we can make this a successful program. It's not intended for free and reduced families necessarily, because they have options, but it's for those who temporarily find themselves unable to afford the hot lunch or breakfast. Then the Theta Care Wapaka Medical Staff Charitable Fund. This was a grant written by the Transportation Department of Lea and Newicki, and it was for some equipment for special needs students in the bus. The Wapaka Foundation, area foundation worked with the Theta Care Wapaka Medical Staff Charitable Fund and made this happen for us. ExxonMobil Travel Center and Van Zeland Oil Company Education Alliance $500 grant for math and science for Wapaka High School. That appears to be an annual grant. We've received that a number of years in the past. Justin J. Watt Foundation, additional money for uniforms and pads valued at $3,479.30. There was a miscommunication, I believe, in the original order. So in order to make that complete, they kicked in another $3,500.
How much is the total of that? Was 12,000?
It's in the range of about $16,000 value.
With this?
With this, right, 12 plus this, yeah.
That's pretty neat.
And then a high school teacher, Dave Larson, donated 174 feet of red oak lumber valued at $382.50.
I think we accept all of these with gratitude.
And appreciation.
And appreciation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you notes, there are two received, Mary Misaln family and J.C. Felton family for contributions made to the Wapaka High School Scholarship Foundation in the name of their mothers who passed away. Recognition, there are a number of students and staff I'd like to recognize. Dakota Marlega and Rob Durfee as WHSFA debate state champs, and I think this weekend they're competing to go to national, from what I understand. Well, good luck to them. The forensic coach, Ron Steinhorst, was named the leading chapter award speech and debate for 2014-15, congratulations to him. This is the Adult School Crossing Guard Recognition Week, January 11th through the 15th. And I know that at least the Wapaka Learning Center does some things to recognize the adult crossing guards in our district. And then finally, the AP District Honor Rolls. The district received recognition for a number, three criteria for being named to this honor roll, and those criteria were included in your packet. So congratulations to high school for earning that award from advanced placement.
Good.
That's it.
Reports on meetings attended?
Here's where I wonder if we can jump into the finance committee.
Okay.
At this point. So, we're going to jump down to AC1 Finance Committee. It's the resolution authorizing the issue and some sale of approximately $3.165 million general obligation refunding bonds. So we have with us tonight Carol Worth. Carl, do you want to do an introduction or are you just ready to go?
I think we're ready to go.
Okay, this is the final step of the process that began several months ago. And I think Carol has good news for us.
Brandon's going to be following up here with a copy of the official statement.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to appear before you. And what I'm here to present tonight is the final sale results of the refinancing that we discussed back in November. Since we have seen you, we have prepared the district to enter the bond market. And that requires the preparation of this booklet, which is called an official statement. It's a prospectus on the school district. So this is required by the SEC. The purpose is to describe the bonds, they call them the securities, the district, both your economic picture, demographics, contains your most recent audit and a couple of legal documents. The other thing that is used for is for the bond rating process. Okay, we went to Moody's Investor Service again. And when you have a bond rating outstanding, you have to go back each time you issue debt in order to have the current issue of bonds rated. So this rating was specifically for these 2016 bonds. Okay, so with that, we also put together what was called an official notice of sale. And the purpose of that document was to distribute that nationwide to solicit underwriters so that this morning, they would place their bids. And we would see from that activity, who is the winning bidder with the lowest interest rate. Okay, so that all happened this morning. So with that, I'm going to start with the other bond document. And you'll see the first page is simply that copy of the front cover of the official statement, just to keep a record. It shows you that we have $3,165,000. There's basically two principal amounts remaining in '17 and '18. And that's what we're refinancing. We're refinancing those two principal amounts from the 2006 bonds. So, and then underneath that, maturity schedule is the purpose. So it tells you, you know, again, this is a nice place to have this document for your record in terms of what was done with this financing. You'll see at the bottom, it tells them when the sale date was and the award, meaning the action by the board tonight. And the resolution that is also in this document. So, the next page is a summary of the sale results. Again, going back to, in November, we had gone through a report regarding refinancing the 2006 bonds because they're reaching their first prepayment date. And that's called being callable on April 1 of 2016. That means the school district has the option to stop the interest to bondholders by giving them a proper 30-day notice. Okay, so in order to do that, the school district needs to issue new refunding bonds to come up with the money to pay off the principal on the outstanding 2006 bonds. Okay, that's where it comes from. And so we're doing that, of course, only for the purpose of savings. So when we looked at the November report, the unknown, of course, was the market. Was the market going to be higher, lower, or the same when we were actually going to take this action tonight? So we've been monitoring that continuously through this process. And again, the next part, market preparations, talks about, you know, again, the preparation of these documents, going through the rating process. And I am pleased to report to you that Moody's has reassigned the AA3 bond rating. And I have some language there from just the summary portion of that report, but their entire report is included in this document as well. And it says that it's based on your moderately sized tax base, slightly below average resident income levels, healthy financial profile, underpinned by sound reserve levels, and prudent management. Declining enrollment that negatively affects operating revenue capacity. They're talking, of course, there about the revenue limit law that applies to all school districts in Wisconsin. This is not specific, but just because you are a school district. Modest debt burden and manageable pension liabilities. Okay, so I will point out more information for you in the credit report that is included herein. But again, very, very positive report. And as you can see just from those few words, many things affect your bond rating, some within your control and some not within your control. And sometimes you overcompensate for the things that are in your control to offset the things that are not. Market results, okay, the 2016 bonds sold at competitive sale this morning. We accepted and verified bids from seven underwriters. So it's very good market interest. Okay, the winning bid was submitted by the firm of BOSC Inc. out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin, at a true interest rate of 1.6048%. And also included is a bid tabulation that shows you the other six bids. This rate does include all of the expenses associated with issuing the bonds. I have that asterisk, and at the very bottom of this page, I have those expenses itemized. The final resolution awards the sale to BOSC Inc. It locks in the interest rates and the tax levy. And just to go back to the November 10th report, when I gave you a projection at that time, the rate was 1.607%. So the difference between the projected rate and the final rate in the overall picture ended up being $137.65 to the good. So, I thought that was quite interesting this morning with the market having gone up and down and to come in at that, I couldn't believe it when I seen the rates coming in. I was like, okay. So you'll see on the second bid, it came in right at a 1.607. I thought, no, nobody's going to believe me that. That I did not know this at that time. The, okay, the final interest rates produce the net savings of $150,502.85, which occurs as a reduction in debt service in the years, in the next two budget years. Okay, and the reason those numbers are, the 200 and the 200 obviously equal 400 and some thousand, but it's because we are subtracting over 200,000 that is coming from your own money. You had some designated debt service funds. So when you take those two savings numbers and subtract your own funds, it becomes the net savings number. Okay, so that's what you're seeing there. Okay, all right, so we have $143,000 of present value savings and we have final debt service schedules. The final resolution is going to be acted upon. It's in this report. Approval of the resolution by the board locks in the rates. And it also authorizes the call of the 2006 bonds because without that authority, we cannot stop the interest. So that is what the board is doing. On February 16th, the district will receive that $3,188,515 for deposit in the debt service account until needed on April 1st to pay off the old six bonds. With that, the following page has at the top, the sources and uses of funds, basically showing where the money is coming from at the top. $3,165 of bonds. And then there is, it's called the offering premium of over 70,000. This is money coming from the investors. They're buying these bonds as premium bonds. So they're actually paying more than $3,164,000 for these bonds. They're giving you an extra $70,000. The other is the transfer from your 2006 bonds. You have levied a tax for the payment on April 1, which is included in here. And also you have the designated funds, the over $200,000 that you're applying as well. So that's where the million two number comes from. And then what, how is the money used? The underwriter expenses, it has the 1.5% of over 47 million, 47,000, I'm sorry. That is to pay all expenses, the underwriter's expenses and all other expenses, as I had it on the previous page. The underwriter is going to be paying those expenses out of this money. And it's basically acting as agent for the district. Then there is going to be your October 1 of 16 interest payment. That this money will be used for paying off all of the bonds on April 1 of 16. And then there is some excess dollars that is returned to debt service of over $3,000. So the bottom, you'll see the comparison of before and after refunding. And I just showed you the two budget years there because we cannot affect this current budget year. You've already levied those taxes, so we're using that money in this refunding. So you'll see the before refunding, that's your 06 bonds. The after refunding is your 2016 bonds and where the savings is occurring. And then, of course, we subtract your funds to get down to that $150,000. Okay, the next page is, at the top of the page, is the repayment schedule. And again, what even was more coincidental is that when I showed you the report in November, I used under the column coupon, which is the interest rate. I used 2% as a projection of how they might be bid, and that's how they were bid. So the schedule is identical to the one I showed you in November. If you look at the pricing schedule, the column in there that says yield, that's the column we were watching. When I sent you a memo for your December meeting, that's the column I was watching because that's what the investor is receiving. So if interest rates rise, as we had seen throughout the month of December, especially after the Fed meeting, they started to inch up a little bit on the short end, but they were going lower on the long end. But for our purposes, we were watching that and we were gaining about 10 basis points. And that's why I said your savings might be affected a little bit, be based on that. But then it kind of stayed stable. Well, this was bid. I had the first yield at a .65 and the second one at a .85. And so that's how close that it came to, came into the projection. And that's why you ended up with an extra $130 some dollars, okay, because of that. So with that, because they're bidding a 2% interest rate with those type of yields, you'll see the dollar price column to the far right. You'll see that it equals more than $3,165. That's where the premium is coming from. That's how they're getting that $70,000, is to how they're selling them to investors. So the math is all below that in the bid information. In terms of, they start with the $3,165, add the 70,000 of premium, and then they show how the underwriter keeps 47 and the rest of it, the $3,100,000 comes back to the district. And then right at the bottom, true interest cost, that's where the 1.604 comes from. The schedule at the very bottom shows you now, and again, this is identical to the schedule you've seen in November because they use the same interest rates. The 2016 bonds principal and interest and the 2013 bonds principal and interest will be the debt service that you will be paying on going forward. And so compared to the 15-16 budget year, you've seen where your levy was and then what it will be now for the next three years. Okay, so if, would you like to go through and look at the Moody's report? Or do you have any questions up to this point?
The only question I have on that is do you recall what rating was last time?
It is a AA3, correct. Yep, that is.
I'm going to ask if board members read nothing else in this report. Please read the report.
Yes.
It says some really great things possible to be done financially in this district. So take a look at that, it really highlights the ratings that have already been used.
It's a lot of credit to, to management of the district because without that type of guidance, and it's a long-term outlook. It's a review that looks back at trend, it looks back at policies, how you have adhered to policy, and it also is forward-looking. Okay, so Moody's does go through and talk about, you know, credit strengths and challenges. And then they go through and talk about in detail by each paragraph about your tax base, about the issues that, for the most part, are outside of the control of a school district. Socio-economic indices, you know, those things that are all part of your rating. So because they consider those to be slightly below average, and this is a national rating, okay, it's not just in Wisconsin, it's a national rating. Then you look to the other topics about management, about how you have built and strengthened the district over time. It's not something like you just had a good year this past year. Okay, it's the consistency and the guidance that has built the district over time and is sustainable in the eyes of Moody's. And so they're very, very happy. They feel that your management numbers, and when I say numbers, I'm talking about how they score you, that you're even greater than the AA3 category. Okay, you would see some that are in the AA2s and AA1s that would have your type of numbers when it comes to management, finances, and debt. The things that are offsetting that would be like the economy, the tax base, the size of the tax base. Okay, so, so that's why many times you'll get that question of, well, you know, what if we do this? Can we raise the rating? And sometimes, you know, you are already doing it. And if you weren't doing it, you would not have the AA3 rating. So, you know, you have to, you know, be very proud of what you've accomplished here. And yes, please do take the time and go through. You'll see that it has the subjects, starting off, the paragraphs. It talks about the, well, there's a lot of statistics here, and that's done so that the market analysts can compare things. But then after that, there are very nicely written paragraphs about the tax base, the financials, the reserves, the liquidity. And then it also talks, of course, about the security itself. So again, congratulations and, you know, you obviously have done a lot of hard work and made a lot of tough decisions to get to that rating level. And, you know, I think it's always nice to see that you're recognized from an independent source that is reporting on a national basis.
Quick question, which is not really necessarily critical, but with your experience when I'm looking at the bids, the first two are very, very close.
Yes.
The next three, or the next two are within three basis points, and then there's a bit of a jump.
Right.
Is that fairly common when you see there are two that are...
Well, in this case, the second bidder, which was Bankers' Bank, really, really was counting on, on winning the, winning the bid. Really counting on. And so they were all excited until they called and found out that somebody beat them by really just, in the third decimal place. And so they weren't very happy with that answer, but they understand. It happens to them frequently. Now, in terms of that spread, now, I guess in order to get everybody else on that same page, you're looking through the resolution or?
It's in the resolution.
In the resolution.
There's an AC.
Okay. Right, so the resolution itself. The resolution has the colored divider, has about seven or eight pages to it. Yes. And then it is followed by a notice of sale, which is Exhibit A. That's what the document I was referring to that is distributed to advertise the sale. And it also gives the underwriters bidding parameters. Then there is Exhibit B, which is the bid tabulation. Okay, the bid tabulation, okay, it shows the first bidder at BOSC Inc. And then it shows the Bankers' Bank of Madison. And that's the one that, when it first came in at the 1.607, actually that was the first bid we received. And I couldn't believe it, that it was right on the same number, to the third decimal place that we talked about in November. But then when we received all the other bids, they all, six other bids, came in on an electronic bidding system. Okay, the Bankers' Bank came in on an email. And so the electronic bids came in, and that's when we found out that the firm of BOSC actually was the winning bidder. And they were the underwriter for the district in 2013, when we did the advance refunding. So we went through a process to select them at that time to be your underwriter. And once again, here they are being your underwriters. So, but the firm at the end, City Securities Corp., is fairly new in terms of a bidder on Wisconsin issues. They, they are a Midwestern firm. They've been around for a long time, but we don't see them participate in many public sales. So I think that's one of the reasons you're seeing some of these people that put out a bid that, you know, they're just kind of starting to dabble in this, in this market. But, you know, even the difference between the $98,000 and $108,000, I mean, that's a lot of dollars in terms of interest. And that would have definitely, you know, impacted your sale results by $10,000, you would have been. So, so, but that is common. That is very common in terms of the spread.
Girl, we've had some pretty wild fluctuations.
Yes. Yes.
But do you think it would be impossible to say you had swings of $1,000, $2,000?
No, you definitely have had, because of those yields, the last time in December, when I wrote the memo, those yields went up 10 basis points. Okay, so I know that your results were going to be affected between $10,000 and $15,000 at that point in time. If we would have done the sale in the December, that would have happened. The timing, yes. And now, the other thing is with this list of bidders having seven bids, and you know, you think about it, is we had a pretty good bidding calendar today. There were a number of issues for underwriters to bid on. So they had their choice of which ones they wanted to place bids on. And here you have an issue, it's a high-quality rating, but it has two maturities, two principal amounts, right? And so for them to all find it very attractive to compete against each other for an issue that has two maturities, you know that, you know, number one, they're impressed by the credit quality. And number two, they knew they would be competing against a lot of other firms, and so that also forced the rate down.
Question. If, excuse me, if our rating by the independent Moody's was something less... If, if, excuse me, if our rating by the independent Moody's was something less than what it is, let's say it was double A two, eight three, or something of that nature, would, how would, in your estimation, how would that affect the percentage and/or the number of bidders? Would both, one go up and one go down?
Uh, no, you will still have the number of bidders. The difference between an A-quality credit rating and a double A-quality credit rating in terms of something that's only over two years is not going to be as significant as something that would go over maybe ten to fifteen years, okay? Because the longer that you are asking investors to lock up their funds with an investment, then they want more yield. So it's like, it starts off being very small, maybe a point oh five or a point ten, and within the first three years goes up a little bit, maybe to a point fifteen by the time you get to the fifth year. But then by the time you get to the tenth year, that's where you're talking where it could get to maybe a quarter of a percent difference. Okay, now, in terms of these bidders, those are all considered high-investment-grade ratings. So these bidders will still continue to bid on that. It's only if you get to the point where you kind of get an iffy rating quality, then you'll have a completely different list of bidders, completely different, because they're into more of the high-yield bond. See, this is very high-quality rated bond, so you're looking, these people are looking for high-quality municipals.
What was our rating previous?
Our twenty thirteen issue?
Yes.
I have that. Yes. When we did the eight million, five twenty-five issue, it was one point two nine.
One point?
One point two nine. The savings was two hundred and fifty-six thousand, thirty-seven dollars. Now, keep in mind, that was on an eight million dollar issue. And now you're doing a three million dollar issue, and your savings is a hundred and fifty thousand, so.
What is the interest rate we're doing now? We have...
Oh, on the old six bonds?
Yeah.
Oh, that four percent. Yes. Yes, I'm sorry, I was. Yes.
Yes, it is.
Oh, yes, oh, yes.
And when you said one point...
Yeah. I always think you were asking me about the last issue that, when we did it. Okay, okay.
So Carol, you need from us a motion to approve the resolution.
That is correct.
And the resolution is going to be titled old one, one-two-one-six. We get the title, right?
Yes, you do.
Yes.
Yes, you do.
We move to approve resolution number old one, one-two-one-six. Resolution authorizing the issuance of sale of three point one-six-five million federal obligation refunding bonds.
Can we do by whole? Which is the call?
Yeah.
Well, I know.
Excuse me, who's second? Who made the second appearance?
Go ahead.
Sandy is the second.
Then we'll do it all call. And Cyland, Patty Baldwin?
Yes.
Kristen Greenfield?
Yes.
Steven Johnson?
Yes.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Pat Fair?
Aye.
Benny Manning?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Good job.
Thank you. Thank you.
And thanks to Carol for getting involved.
Will we, any chance to be seeing you before we're all done?
Nothing left to do, so.
In terms of your bonding right now, your debt is all permanently placed. The one point two nine was the interest rate I was giving you on the thirteen bonds that you have outstanding. So with both of your issues at the one percent permanently placed, there should be no, no reason to touch anything that's existing, so I think you're in good shape that way. But if there's anything that I can ever do with regard to, you know, helping out, I mean, we, we communicate with Carol with regard to, you know, every year when valuations come out, we give our projection to the district, you know, we're always there to answer questions about debt service, or if you have any, any what-ifs, and if there's something I can do to help with that. You know, please, you know, feel free to, you know, I'll come to a meeting anytime you'd like me to, and, you know, we do presentations for school districts on, on many things. I do some for districts on the importance of fund balance, you know, I do referenda work for other districts, some of them, I'm going to be doing a presentation about basically how to understand their tax bill. So, a wide range of topics. Thank you very much for all your trust and confidence in letting us work with you again. We will have some two-bit forms and some resolutions, so we'll just hang out until we get to the point of being able to sign them.
Well, if you have right now, we can sign them.
You can, okay, oh, all right, well, we'll, we'll do the thing.
I need to do it throughout.
Okay, all right.
While we're doing that, I'd just like to introduce briefly the next topic we're going to move to before monitoring. As you recall, one of the suggestions was to bring in a number of students, recent graduates who are attending college, either four-year or two-year, and ask them about their experience and how the student service will affect and serve them to allow them to be successful at the next level. So prior to Christmas, I talked to Mr. Agarwad and Mr. Rector and said, let's see if you can add this, or let's see if you can find some new people. And they did, did a very nice job, some names and faces I've recognized from a year or two ago. And I'm gonna ask, we have asked to get set up in a year.
You gotta look through the table and see who they are.
Vander over here, Nicole on that. So we have four recent graduates. Hannah was twenty fourteen.
Yeah, correct.
And Xander and Bryce are twenty fourteen, right?
Yeah.
And Nicole, are you twenty?
We all graduated at the same year.
Same year, fantastic. And I hope I got your schools ready. UW Stevens Point, correct? Madison?
Yep.
UW La Crosse?
Yep.
Stevens Point? Very good, all right. So if you would, kind of discuss with the board, those, first of all, they're interested in what kind of courses you took when you were in high school, you know, what kind of experience did you have while, while you were there? And then one of the questions that they'd like to know about is just, how do you, how well-prepared did you feel you were when you went to college, as far as academics, and as far as just socially, ready to go to college? And then the last thing is, if there's one thing you wish you would have gotten in, in high school, going to college, what is that?
Go ahead, Hannah. I guess I'll go first. Wow, there's a lot of questions. So I'm at Stevens Point, and when I was in high school, I was really interested in, I guess, everything. I wanted to leave knowing that I took a class in every single department that the high school had to offer, that was kind of my goal coming out of it. So I had an experience, wide range of experiences of what there all was and what that entailed. I did a lot of music classes in high school, I was in matriles and did concert choir and was in the musicals, that was where my heart was, but I also did a lot academically as well, took a lot of the higher ends, and was able to actually, you know, graduating a semester early because I did the cap courses and did AP classes, so that was very beneficial for me going into, or coming out of high school into college. Oh, or the other questions, so.
So are we gonna just do a little question?
Do you just want one question?
Well, we asked them to address the four questions, now, we put them up here.
Oh, perfect, okay. Awesome. So then, prepared for college coursework. I think the two main things for me that were a struggle going into college was I had never really read a textbook and had to go through that, or read it, take notes, and then have to take a test from the textbook, not necessarily from what I learned in the class or from lecture. So that was really difficult for me my first semester in college. And then also, when it came to studying, I kind of went through high school, I didn't have to study a lot, I just got good grades, which is probably not something you want to hear, but, and so then going to college, it was a little more difficult because I actually had to study and put forth that effort. So having to understand, how do I go about this, how do I actually study, I decided to teach myself. So that was a difficulty that I faced, but I felt that I was prepared for the college coursework. There are definitely a few classes in high school that I went to college and literally just bruised right through because it was exactly what I had done in high school. So that was nice in a sense because I knew what to expect and I, I kind of knew the course material. The social and emotional demands of college, I would definitely say, for me, I had an awesome high school experience, and I was able to be in a lot of leadership roles in high school, and that really prepared me for college to kind of go in full force and know that I was going to do that as well. So at Stevens Point now, I'm involved in many different organizations and hold a lot of different positions, and so that, I guess, for me, being in high school, having a strong friend group and teachers who really poured into me and really wanted me to succeed and see me do my best, really helped me to be able to be prepared to college, for college, and go at it, knowing that it was going to be a great experience. So strengths and weaknesses of my experience. I would definitely say a strength for me was having, having teacher support for, for me personally, I know that I had a lot of teachers that became very close to me that I, that really poured into my life and wanted me to do my best, and so from that, they were able to pull out the strengths that I didn't really know that I had, and then kind of go forth with that. And then weaknesses, I would say, going into college, it was, as I kind of said with the whole textbooks and having this study, and that would probably be the weakness is not having that in high school to kind of prepare me for college in that. But otherwise, I would definitely say that high school very well-prepared me for college and what that was all going to entail.
Okay. Yeah, I guess, I was kind of similar to her, too, like I took a wide variety of classes, like choir and then a lot of math and science, although choir was mainly because my mom told me to, but, I mean, I, I do think it helped a lot, just because especially when you go to college, it's going to be the same thing where you, I mean, you're gonna have to take a lot of like, you know, like ethnic studies, literature studies like that, I mean, no matter what you major in, like I'm, I'm probably gonna major in biology, but I still have to take a certain amount of credits for like ethnic studies and humanities. So I'm glad I did that, I mean, that like really helps, just kind of being used to that. Yeah, and then I think the biggest thing that helped me was AP courses in high school. That was huge, just coming in with credits already. And then, like I took like AP Calc, and one, the nice thing with that was, so like I tested out like the beginner, like math classes that all students have to take. So then when I took Calc at UW Madison, it was, I felt like I had a huge advantage over people because most people in the class had never taken it before. So like for me, it was basically, it felt like a review, and I did like really well compared to a lot of other students, so I felt that was a really big advantage. What's that?
Was that a bunny then?
Yeah, 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 like I, I thought it was gonna be pretty hard, but I was really thankful that I, because I wasn't sure if I should stick with Calc in high school, but looking back on it, I'm really glad I did because that helped out a ton. And then cap courses as well, I did that, which I thought were huge. I mean, I felt pretty well-prepared for classes. Like I, I really didn't change my study habits a lot, I felt like the ones I developed like in high school were pretty solid, but I guess it, it was also nice for me, too, because, like, now that I have like the opportunity to play football in college, too, they also provide a lot of academic help, which is really nice, so like, we get, like our all-freshmen basically have to do like study tables and then like a certain amount of hours per week for studying. So I think doing that actually really helped like solidify kind of like how I should study for college, which was nice to have that. And then socially, I mean, I was like obviously really big into athletics in high school, so, I mean, like that was really where I got most of my, my friend groups from, and then, I mean, that, that helped a lot, too, because it was, it was nice, it made going into college, playing football there made it a lot easier, just knowing how to handle those situations, and it was just nice kind of having a team going into college where, you know, you kind of just had like that set group of people that you could kind of bond with and like go through it all together. But yeah, I mean, overall, I thought it was like a really good experience. The one thing, I feel like, like writing-wise, like high school like definitely helped me like prepare how to write clearly and like effectively, but the one thing I kind of wish I had more of, I guess, would be like a wider background in like citing your sources, because in college, that's like, in high school, it's not as much of a big deal, but when you get to college, like you can really get in trouble with that, and you have to be really like detailed, really careful with how you're citing everything, and it seems like for every class, they want a different style of citing. So I just think that'd be nice, maybe in high school, to get more of a, like a deeper background on that, because that could save you a lot of time when you're writing papers and trying to polish it up, especially just because you can be under a time crunch. But, yeah, I'd say overall, I had a really good experience, and I felt very well-prepared going into college, so, yeah.
All right, well, I like them, in high school, I took, I took a wide variety of classes, choir and, you know, gym and math and science, and I ended up, I think I took maybe three or four AP classes in the different core, you know, core subjects, and those like are the biggest thing that, that helped me through college, because, you know, I mean, I know a lot of them count as college credit, and like that, not only does it help you like to know what you're doing in those classes, but also like going into college with like a couple of credits, it puts you like ahead of your classmates as far as like scheduling classes for like next semesters, and that's like been like my biggest advantage is because, you know, I had credits coming in, so I always got to schedule like a little bit earlier than everybody else, and then, you know, you get ahead and you can, you know, you get a schedule based more of like what you want. In high school, I took Spanish through Spanish five, and that's like, I'm minoring in Spanish, so that's been like my biggest help from high school, you know, I, I tested high in Spanish, and I have three semesters under my belt, and I'm already like halfway to a minor, so, I mean, that was, that was a big help. As far as being prepared, to me, like the rigors of the college coursework, I think, yeah, I didn't like study a ton in high school, but, you know, I studied when I had to. In college, obviously, you gotta study a lot more and like do it more in your own time. You know, like, like Hannah said, like learning from the book is more common in college than like actually learning from your teacher, which, I mean, as a freshman, a little bit, I struggled with it, but you know, you figure it out pretty quick. Handling like social, emotional demands, I mean, high school isn't really the same as college at all, so like, I mean, there's no way to like make the transition like instantly, but, I mean, I'd say we, like, this isn't really a, like, school district that like, you know, it doesn't like pamper you or like, you know what I mean, like it lets you know what's out there, so I think we're all fine, like going into college and being independent, like on our own, and, you know, being responsible. I know a lot of kids, like, you know, you get like the freedom when you get to college and it go to your head a little bit, and I think that coming out of a pack, like, not a lot of people struggle with that. Strengths and weaknesses, I mean, the strengths, like I said, were like taking the AP classes and getting ahead, and Spanish, like, I'm really thankful for Spanish, like if I had to pick something out. Also, like what Xander said with writing, like, I was never a good writer like before high school, and in high school, like I learned how to write and like actually got it down, and that's helped me in college, and like a lot of classes are just basically writing essays and essay tests, so that helps. And really, like the only weakness I can think of is, I've never been very good at like doing projects where I have like a long time to do them, because, you know, I wait till the end, and I know like... So, yeah, like, I mean, in high school, you don't really have like a lot of them, I know we had some, but usually can like procrastinate, still get away with it, and in college you can't, so that'd probably be the one thing that I like would say I wasn't really prepared for is like... is like getting my stuff done ahead of time.
Yeah, I feel like I'm kinda gonna talk off of what they did, but coursework, I took a lot of like science and math and social studies, I took some ag. Didn't take choir, don't wanna hear me sing. So I definitely, I took some Spanish and like Bryce said, I definitely agree. I took Spanish up until Spanish five and tested into like junior-level Spanish my freshman year of college and pulled in enough retroactive credits and then AP credits and cap courses that I'm graduating possibly a year early, but definitely a semester early. So, and with terms of scheduling and whatnot, it's really nice because a lot of, um, I'm a business, finance, insurance, real estate, and economics major. So it's nice getting into those higher-level courses when the juniors and seniors are versus when I should be getting into them with my peers because I'd be on a really long waitlist. I felt really well-prepared for the most part. Like Bryce said, or like Xander said, citing sources is a lot more important because we have, I know, I think it's turnitin.com is what Point uses. I don't know about what the rest of the universities do, but we turn our papers in and within minutes of submitting it into what they call the Dropbox. We know if our paper's been, how, what percentage of our paper that the system, and I know I used it in Mr. Ferr's classes in English, I believe, when I was in high school. We know if our papers were plagiarized. So it's not so much that if you're plagiarizing it, it's if, you know, you forget to put the quotes in or forget to cite it, and especially with the different types of citing you're doing, it's, you can't keep it straight. But as for rigor, I didn't have to study a ton in high school. I sleep less now. I work full-time and I go to school full-time, so I sleep less. But as studying-wise, I think like courses, like the higher levels, the cap courses, the big one for me was stats. I took stats with Dale Felton my senior year of high school and I had other stuff going on, so I didn't take the AP exam, that, but taking that class saved me. I took it over this, the stats class, it's called Math 355 at Point over the summer. And if it weren't for Dale Felton, I would not have gotten through it because the professor didn't know how to work like a graphing calculator. All he talked about how stats could, is how stats can get you to like gamble well. And I spent like three nights a week in Mr. Felton's living room at his kitchen table, like doing stats homework. And if it weren't for that and doing it in high school, I never would have gotten through it. Social and emotional, I had a lot of friends in high school, I have a lot of friends in college. I don't think, I think like Bryce said, like, freedom is a little different because you don't have like your parents telling you you need to do things. But other than that, I just, I sleep less. Strengths and weaknesses in the district, I think definitely, especially, you know, like, like I said, the math department, the business department, and then I was big into FFA in high school, so I learned how to plan and implement a lot of stuff, which is really nice. It's nice to be able to do that even with just projects because I think a lot of us know that group project in college often means, look how much work I get to do by myself. But that, nothing's changed. And like resume writing, I did a lot of that in FFA and that's awesome as, like I say, I work full-time for a bank and then I go to Point full-time. So being able to know how to do that, whether it be writing a resume for applying for a job or applying for scholarships, whatever it might be, it's really nice to have that under my belt and know how to do it and be able to write a resume with people who've been doing it twenty, thirty years. It's nice to be able to compare to that versus, especially looking for a job, somebody my age, other people have thirty, forty years of experience of doing stuff and I'm competing against these people for jobs. At least having that format to look at and employers saying, okay, this is, this is up to par. Weaknesses, I think it's not so much a weakness of the district in itself, but, and, but like accountability. So in high school, you can kinda, if you get a zero, you get a zero, you can get away with it. Or, oh, you know, we can turn it in late, we can turn it in late. Not that I ever did that in high school, but, um, in college, you can't do that. If, if you don't show up to class, if you don't turn it in, you're kind of out of luck. And when you're paying for it, it means a lot more than, you know, so. And I would agree with Xander with citing and definitely with writing. I wrote a lot in high school, but, I mean, I read a lot more in college. So any like extra emphasis on that is nice.
So Nicole, can you talk a little bit about work experience? One thing that you did in high school that's very different from the other three is that you had a job that was through work experience.
Yeah, um, I actually worked for Jay. So, um, I worked for the Farmer State Bank of Opaacca in their bookkeeping department. And I was out on Huber from school, so. Huber, my junior year and my senior year, I started in two thousand twelve and the summer of two thousand twelve at Farmer State Bank. I worked after school throughout my junior year and then my senior year, I did the work release program. Work release.
You call it work-study.
Jay checked my ankle bracelet every day. No, I think I got a lot from it. So when I went to college, I took some time off from the bank, I came back over the summer and now I work for Anchor Bank, which is actually just today was acquired by Old National of Indiana, so we're now Old National Bank. But I learned so much. So I'm, a lot of college kids don't know like how to work your bank account and like how important it is to build credit and like learn how to write checks and do bills and all that. And I think I have the advantage because of what I've learned. The people I worked with were really, really good, so like I still talk to Jay quite often. Denise Abrahamson was my immediate supervisor, I still talk to her quite a bit. Lane Lazar's, work with him still very often. And I think that having, especially at my age, having those people, I'm a big believer and it's all in who you know. And knowing those type of people, I've worked with Dr. Preschel quite a bit, planning and implementing things, whether it not, whether it be, I did the Honor Flight Project, I did Kids Against Hunger, I worked with Mr. Shambro, Mr. Johnson, and a variety, Mr. Ferr, he was my teacher and I had you at church. So I'm familiar with the whole variety of the school board. But working, I think, gives you a whole new perspective because it teaches you, especially at a bank, like what things cost and paying for college is fun. But you get that background that you don't have just going to school. So like having my resume, Ms. Arv helped a lot with that. And then that gave me the opportunity to, you know, get that job at Farmers, learn that much. And now, like I say, I work full-time and go to school full-time. And when I applied for this job, I had gone up against other women and men who were quite a bit older than me and had a lot more experience. But because I had that experience at Farmer State and what I did there, I beat like seven other people out for my position and I had the resume I used from high school, so.
Well, I'm sure there are a lot of questions, so we'll open it up.
I'm interested because Xander said you have to teach yourself or learn new skills. How do you have to, I guess that's not really just a point, um, how, how do you line up here now? But I'm interested, Hannah, how did you teach yourself how to study then?
So, I mean, I studied a little bit in high school and just kind of gathered in that. But I had my first semester freshman year, I had a really awesome professor actually. But he took a week and he said, okay, we are gonna talk about how to study because you guys are freshmen and you probably have no idea what you're doing. So it was, it was good and he actually is one of my really good friends now and I keep in contact with him. But he just kinda sat down with us and was like, this is how you do it. Because I know a lot of you probably didn't study very hard in high school. So he laid it out for me and was like, this is how much time you should be doing this and this is what you should be doing here. And kinda took the textbook and said, okay, so this is how you skim it and this is what information you take out of it. So I've never really had that before where somebody just sat down and said, this is how you do it and this is how you study. So that was really beneficial for me and how I kinda made that transition.
I'd just say, um, for me, like, I did it in high school, I do it in college, like, because like there's so many like electronics now and like, like with computers and everything, like the one thing I do, like I think there's something to be said with just showing up to lecture and like writing down your own notes from like what the professor says, because like I personally still like have not read like a page out of the textbook. But like I've been doing pretty well and it's like basically what I do for most, like ninety percent of my classes is I just, I show up to every lecture and I just write down what he has on the slides and then other things he has to say because, like, the biggest, they're gonna tell you in class, they're gonna emphasize what's the most important. Whereas like if you just read out of a textbook, there's so much information and you never, you don't really know how to filter like properly, so, I mean, like I think the biggest thing that I do that really helps and that could be emphasized in high school is just maybe like writing your own notes, handwriting your own notes and just showing up to class. Because if you just do those two things, I think you have a huge advantage over other, other people.
Yeah, building off of what Xander said, I agree. There's a lot of classes that even, like, a lot of people bring laptops to. I often just print the slides off and don't bring my phone or my laptop because there's so many other things you really could get distracted doing. And I think probably all but one of my classes, we have the textbook. I think I've probably opened a total of two textbooks. And it's not so much that I'm not studying, it's that the textbooks are used as a supplement in a lot of my classes, so it's more of what the professor says in lecture, what the professor puts on the slides than it is in the textbook, because what comes from like the textbook is on the slides. And like Xander said, trying to weed through a textbook, especially because I have some classes that we don't do any homework, we don't do any projects, it's literally a midterm and a final. And trying to weed through all of that information in the textbook is a lot harder than just going to lecture, writing down your notes and then kind of skimming through the slides versus trying to read ten chapters for a midterm.
One thing that I found helps a lot, like, you know, I mean, like she said, like a lot of classes, there's not a lot of grades, it's like, there's big tests. And like, after like each lecture or something, I'll just make flashcards of like the important points. And then when it's time to study for the test, you have them. And I know like you don't have to like write them out, you can, like, there's websites, you can just make flashcards. And I mean, for me, like, that's the easiest way, is just like quiz myself over and over until, until I got it done.
I got a couple of questions. First of all, I had all four of these students at one time or another in high school and I know that all of you have great leadership skills. That's one of the reasons why you're able to communicate so well with us here today. But now you all are going to large universities. I mean, nobody here is going to a very small private school, you all go to large universities. Do you feel yourself sort of like a, no longer the, the big fish in a small pond and now you're, you're in a big university and you're kind of a, just a average person, if you will? And I know some of you are involved in some pretty high-level focused public things like football and so on. But still, you know, is that, has that been a tough transition for some of you? To all of a sudden feel you're not quite so important as you might have thought in high school?
You can go. All right, I would say like, I mean, not really, you know, like, I mean, it's like the goal of college is to like be popular. You know, you're there to like get an education so you can get a job and, you know, I mean, I think, I think all of us probably have like a lot of friends in college that, you know, that's all you really need. You don't gotta be like famous, I guess.
Unless there's Xander, then we watch him on TV.
I, I don't know, I mean, I was never, I guess I wasn't like really worried about like that, going to college. I mean, because like for me, it was just getting a good group of friends and then really just focusing on school and football. I mean, I don't really like think about like, you know, like, like the big fish, you know, and all that. I mean, it's just, just make sure I do as best as I can, I guess. I don't, I guess I just don't like really like try and like compare like myself to others, just do as best as I can.
My other, my other comment is, all of you have sort of implied, and I think this is a good thing for us to remember as teachers and school district, all of you have been able to adapt pretty well, I think. That you all said at one point or another in your comments that when the professor puts something on the board or when the professor says we have to cite in such a way, you realize pretty soon after high school that it's, it's all run by the staff and the professors there. They're the important people and you've adapted pretty well. I think in high school, a lot of students forget that what the teacher says is so important and they don't wanna take the notes and they don't do the citing. But you learn pretty quickly afterwards that that's really what it's all about. And as long as you're able to go from one class to the next, I think Xander even said, some of them cite differently in a different class.
Yeah.
You gotta adapt, you gotta just learn on the fly, this is the way this person wants it done. That's the way you gotta do it. And as Nicole said, or you're gonna lose your own money in the process. And I think that's, it's really good to hear that you've been able to adapt because a lot of people don't do a very good job of adapting.
We hear, oh, we hear quite a bit that we expect too much, especially with high school kids. You're pulled in so many different directions and nobody's sleeping and there's breakdowns and whatever. And you guys are certainly a good cross-section of, it seems like you got it all done. Do you think, do you feel like too much was expected of you and that you were overwhelmed?
I don't, I think maybe even too little, like not enough was expected of us. Because I think, you know, they think, the educational system has changed a lot since I've been, you know, from preschool to kindergarten, a lot more with like common core standards are different from, way different from when I was in grade school. But sometimes I think we expect too little. So like I say, with late grades and zeros and stuff, there's sometimes just not enough accountability in the kids, whether it be personal choices or academic choices. So I think with the rigor of classes I took and the instructors and teachers and support systems I had, I was probably pushed just enough, but never too much.
I would say like, I don't know, speaking for me and like probably a lot for him too, like playing three sports in high school and like we were in musicals and stuff. And, I mean, I never like, didn't have time to hang out or like didn't get enough sleep. I mean, some nights I was like, you don't get like, you know, your eight hours, but, I mean, that's fine. I never felt like I was like pulled too thin or anything like that.
Yeah, I don't feel like it was like too much at all in high school. I mean, like even, like playing three sports and musicals, I still feel like it's not, like, that was nothing, like even just compared to college, so like, but I think maybe like one of the reasons we feel that way is just because we probably had like good guidance, I guess, just like from our parents and stuff as far as how to manage our time and stuff. I mean, I know like my parents helped me a lot, just developing like good habits, like getting my stuff done right away, so then I would have time to just relax. So I mean, I think that may be like one of the reasons why.
Yeah, I'd have to agree with Xander, just having parental guidance and, okay, this is how you need to organize and get everything done and manage it. Because I wouldn't say that it was stressful in high school at all. I actually kinda miss being super busy in all the different areas now being in college. But I think it, it definitely prepares you for the real world of knowing that it's not always just gonna be an easy, like this is a routine of life, that there's gonna be different things that come up that you need to do and you need to be able to manage that and kind of put your focus where it needs to be and get things done when they need to be done in a timely manner.
And I, to build off of what Hannah and Xander said, I definitely agree with the parent support aspect of that because I was taught at very young age, like, school comes first. Even like as much as I worked through high school and now through college, like, school comes first, it's the most important. So I was always, you know, told and then just did it myself, like when I got home from school or work, it was homework. And then you could go and do whatever you wanted with your friends or whatever it might be, but until your homework was done, you weren't doing anything. And I think having that kind of instilled upon me at a young age made academics so very important and I held it to a higher standard.
Well, and your success, at least this part, certainly shows that, yeah. And you know, you know, we, we struggle a lot in this district with a lot of low students and so it is a balance. So it's, it's worrisome to hear that maybe we're not pushing enough, but then if we had a different group of kids sitting here, I'm sure they would say that we push too much. So that's always finding that balance.
Hannah, thanks.
Question, how, be going to, you know, big-sized universities, large universities, how do you feel you were prepared in comparison to other schools around you? Like, I'm sure you have come across kids between some private schools or big schools and schools smaller than you. So how would you put yourself on that scale of your class?
I would say like, you know, going to lacrosse, like I have roommates from like some, a lot like bigger high schools, like Sun Prairie and like Bayport and, I would say like, I mean, not to like talk bad about them, but I don't think they really stack up. Like I think Opaacca has a pretty strong school district as far as like academics goes. And like, I'm somewhat proud of like coming from here. Like, I feel like we're as prepared, if not more prepared than anyone like from other places, at least in Wisconsin.
I agree, I took that class, like I said, that stats class over the summer and, um, McEniguski, another girl who graduated. I agree, I took that class, like I said, that stats class over the summer and, um, McEnuguski, another girl who graduated seven years, we did was in the same class and because I, we took that class, it must have felt, we were, we had two of the highest grades in the entire class. And we probably sadly enough studied the least because we knew it, we did it. And you can, I mean, you can hear people say what they want about Wopaka and how bad it is, but I totally disagree, I'm very proud to have gone to school here. And I think even in any of the other classes I took, whether it be the my business courses that I take now or just like writing and general English classes, we, I think Wopaka stacks up a lot higher than any of the other courses, classes do, whether it be, you know, large high schools like that or just small private schools, we stack up.
You go. Like one of my good friends went to like Eden Prairie in Minnesota, which is like, like thirty-two hundred kids at their high school. And I mean, like he, I feel like we were still pretty much at this, like the same level, but, um, the only thing he had, I don't know, like, do you guys offer like Kelp two or three now, or is that something that's not?
It's something that we do when students need it. So, and this dragon wrecked overseas is math department, but, um, we do have some kids that'll take it because they've maxed out the curriculum that we have taught. And so we'll, we'll look for where we, where we can pick that course up from. Sometimes we do it through a company called Apex that provides college level coursework. But we, we can do even APs where we've got kids doing AP psychology and something like that, we're doing it mostly online. We do have somewhere, uh, kids doing independent study also, but calculus would be a tough one to do an independent study for.
Yeah, that, I, cause I was gonna say, that was like the only, really the only thing where like his high school offered it, but and at the same time, they have thirty-two hundred kids, so there's gonna be more people to take it, um. But yeah, I mean, I guess I was kind of surprised, like with my, like math and science classes, they'll show like your, like where you stand, like after every test and stuff and like, for the most part, I was always in like the top like fifteen or twenty percent like with like test scores. So like, I'd say like we, Wopaka's doing pretty well, like preparing him like that, so.
Yeah, I'd go along with them as well, I know I have a lot of friends in this point that have come from bigger schools. But Wopaka especially, one thing I guess to boast about is there's a lot of hand up, hands-on experiences in the classroom and that's a lot of things that my peers haven't had going into college. And that I think has kind of set us apart as well. I'm going to be an elementary teacher, so it's nice to kind of have, um, that background from high school and um, especially going into our biology classes or chemistry classes for teaching students. We do a lot of things hands-on and it kind of goes back to what I've learned in high school and a lot of the students coming in like, oh, I've never seen this before, never actually worked with a human skeleton or whatever we've done in science classes. And it's surprising to me to know that they haven't had that same experience as me, especially when I'm coming from a smaller school. So I would definitely agree with all of them that I'm so proud to have come from Wopaka and just had the experiences in high school that we did.
And I think from my high school experience too, it was nice to be able to have access to you guys, so I've worked with probably all of you at some point while I was in high school and it was nice that, you know, you guys are the school board, but I had access to you versus, you know, a lot of kids don't know who their school board is. So it was nice to not only have access to my instructors as much as I needed them in high school, but also if I had a problem or had a question, you very often, I worked with Dr. Pashal a lot, so it was nice to have access to those people as well as my teachers.
And most students realize that they have that access?
They don't want it. Um, I, I think, I think it's nice to know that you do, so, I mean, probably not, um, it all depends on what you're into, so I planned and implemented a lot of stuff, so, um, some of you came and volunteered for things I did. Um, I worked with Dr. Pashal a lot, just getting things approved if it was okay for me to do this. So, um, depending on what level you are and what you're doing in high school, I know Hannah has worked with some of you at some point as well, so it's nice to have you. Yeah, I think, I think it's, at least for the student body to know, I, most people know who Dr. Pashal is, but um, it's nice to know who you are. So, um, if there is an issue, if there is a question or if, um, a student, you know, comes up with an idea and wants to try to implement something in the high school or even grades below it, I think it's nice to know that they have somebody to approach with that idea. And that, um, I think that builds better leaders.
But that's a two-way street, um, you have to give Nicole credit, we're reaching out to people and she's that type of person, we are available and if someone does reach out, we'll do that.
So you're going to education, you're going to the business and finance, your library is failing, is your garden major?
Uh, business.
Business?
Yeah. Biology?
What do you wanna do for that?
Uh, hoping to go to med school with the, yeah, so that's kind of what I'm planning on right now.
I picked up a kind of an interesting, um, maybe comment you could think about, uh, just recently there was an article about education at the high school level that we should be, high schools should be more career oriented in terms of their curriculum. And, um, as opposed to, and I think you all have said and realized, we're kind of in the liberal arts mode where you get a little bit of everything and then when you get to college, you can, what, what do you think about that? If our curriculum um, were to change, if it were, you know, if we, we thought about changing it, would we be wise to kind of look more at a career oriented or are we better off to leave it wide open because you may be changing majors anyway, that sort of thing?
Yeah, I would say, I mean, I guess I can't speak for everyone, but for me, like, I mean, I never knew what I wanted to do. I didn't even know what I wanted to major in until like I got to college, so I mean, for me, I wouldn't have done any good in high school, like have a, you know, path chosen, cause I probably wouldn't have ended up doing it anyways. I mean, like some kids, you know, they know what they wanna do from time they're ten years old, so it would work for them, I guess it's just, it kind of depends, you know?
I agree with Bryce in that, like, for the most part, we have some of those classes anyways, like I took business classes, but, um, there is anatomy, there's science classes like that, I think that where we're at is a good spot to be because regardless of whether or not you know what you wanna do in high school, you still have to take those liberal arts credits in college just to fulfill your general education credits. So I, I agree, I don't think I lost other than anything, not having that career oriented education.
One of the things that we, the board and administration pride ourselves in is making sure that you have opportunities beyond, you have to have them. Things like going to New York, going to Florida, going to the United States. Is it worth our effort to keep those things available to you guys? Does it make a difference?
I would say most definitely, those are some of my fondest experiences in high school where, um, traveling, um, I know for New York, I did that, um, with choir and then doing musicals and with matriles, traveling around to the different churches, singing during Christmas. Going with FFA to the convention in Minneapolis, it was just, those were the times that I, I remember the most because I, I guess we were free, it wasn't, it wasn't like in the classroom, what you expect every day, it was something different, but yet it was still part, like you're still learning, it's still part of school in, in a way. So I would say it's definitely worth your effort to support those opportunities for students to be able to take and go into.
Does it help with that social emotional adjustment to college that you have those opportunities?
I think it puts me at a whole nother playing field because I've had those experiences, I know talking with a lot of other peers and students, they haven't traveled outside of Wisconsin, which is really surprising to me that you just haven't left, but they, they never had any trips offered in their high school, they were never, that was just their life was high school and so I have all these experiences of different places that I've gone and what I've done and, um, it's just very I get, yeah, like it just puts me in a different, in a different place because they haven't had that and so I would definitely say that it has definitely been for me.
I'm gonna ask what may be a difficult question for many people, but I'm assuming it won't be, it won't be for you because it's very articulate. Andrew Nelson, she should be able to answer it. We asked you, has Wopaka, the school district, prepared you for college, and would we certainly submit grants to make you the opportunity for yourself to prepare yourself for your knowledge? Not everyone necessarily has the same level of success as you have been preparing for, others, college, or textbooks or textbooks or education, I mean. Based on your observations, is there something, your observations of others, you've been successful, but based on your observations of other individuals, is there something else that you believe we could do to better what we are providing for students? And if that's not manageable question, I'll respect that as well. I'll give you my email, you can send it away.
Make sure you share it with us, Mr. Johnson, because when I think about it, I think about the magic wand that we want to wave and have all students really do well. You know, obviously they figured it out for themselves, but how do you translate that to others and so we honestly, if you have ideas of things that we could, could have done with your classmates who didn't achieve as highly as you, we'd love to know the answer to that.
I think like for the four of us, I mean, we had a, our grade, we all kind of got along, so I've done things about you at some point in my life, but, um, I'm a big believer in that you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make it drink. And I think we are all big self motivators on basically every level, so I think that's like a big part of it is getting the kids to motivate themselves. I know that's not always possible, but I think that's like part of our success is that we were able to motivate ourselves. Even if others weren't, you know, pushing us, we were pushing ourselves.
You're looking forward to your life, is it?
So how about the weather? Okay, well, on that note. The two things that I heard the biggest weaknesses were study habits and being able to cite sources and write papers.
And not using textbooks.
So if you had a suggestion for how we should help students learn how to study, would you, where would you put that course in, in high school? How, how would, what would it look like to you? Would it be, you know, a little lurb of a course, would it be a semester? How, what would you think would help?
I think like citing sources maybe, um, like in your English class, you could, you could just maybe spend a week or two where you kind of go through like the main like sources, whether, you know, like MLA or like anything like that. And just have them like, just write, just like a short, but maybe like one page like thing and then just go through like pretty much like the main areas where you'd have to cite it properly for each style. And then you could just, um, you'd like take each example and just, just like give it back to them, like put it in a folder and just say, it like, keep this for college, I mean, a lot of kids will probably just throw it away and say it's not important, but like the people who are motivated and like wanna succeed in college and if you really stress that it's gonna be important, I think that would be really helpful to maybe just do that where you have like a week or two, go through each example and then give it back to them where it's something they can keep and hold on to, so then when they get there in the class, they'll have it to kind of reference back to.
And would you do that senior year?
Uh, yeah, I probably would, yeah, for sure.
Or the senior English class?
Yeah, like, I mean, like, like those cap courses we did, like, that would probably be a good.
Well, the cap course that we had primarily was for essay writing, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Doing research writing, um, which is a whole nother whole, all the way. But you're, you're, you're kind of right in, in listening and what Xander said, that part of the problem is, in the modern world is um, there's, there's more than one way to cite now and, uh, there's several different reference points. So, um, a lot of times, I, I agree with Xander, it wouldn't hurt at all to do more general citing a thing, just knowing that you can't just write something, take it from a book and not give some credit. If you just get that concept across alone, you, you've made some headway. But the actual method by which you do it, you might do something here at Wopaka and then the next place you go at Point or or La Crosse and the teacher's gonna say, well, we aren't using that here, we're using this instead. So you have to, to kind of just adapt that, but at least you know what citing means. And what should be cited and what shouldn't be.
Yeah.
I think that's really the big thing.
But even if you did the three major sources like?
Yeah, and just kind of show that they're out there.
Yeah.
I mean, it's the same thing with three ways.
And maybe show where the best place is to go to like cite it, cause like you can show us how to do it like the long end way, but when people like, we're always gonna wanna do it like the easiest, quickest way, so like show like a website where you can just copy and paste it in and it'll give you something that you know is correct and you can use, I think that'd be really helpful.
And as far as the study habits go, what would you suggest about that?
I mean, I would say like for study habits, I mean, you're probably not gonna get like a whole semester on like studying. So maybe like, I know like we had lyceums and stuff in high school, you know, maybe just take like, you know, a couple hours and send them to the auditorium. Or maybe just like one class, you know, like a freshman class, send them down there in like the first week of school, I mean, I think it would be helpful.
I think like, uh, what was it, like that reality store kind of deal thing we did? Maybe something just like for a class and varying days because I vaguely remember like a skills course in middle school that we all had to take with Mrs. Lusney, I think it was, about like how to kind of do that and I think, isn't there like a study skills course in high school that you can base?
There is, we have a study skills course as part of our business education department.
But, um, I think that, you know, an entire semester, that's a little, yeah, maybe a little bit of overkill, but yeah, definitely building on that, just maybe an hour or two of saying, okay, maybe you don't have to read the entire textbook, but like here's how to study from a textbook versus.
And what year would you put that?
I would say probably senior year, junior or senior year because, um, I got through high school pretty good without having to read the entirety of the textbook, I mean, I've definitely read a lot of textbooks in high school, but, um, just skimming, not reading and I think a lot of kids maybe are trying to read the textbook and that gets to the point where there's so much you're trying to read that you just can't absorb it, so yes, senior year right before college would be awesome.
I could see maybe doing like freshman year, having something where it's more of like a general studying and then when you get to senior year, for students to take like AP and cap courses. Like, like maybe in that first week, like most of the time you don't really do a whole lot, it's just like syllabus and stuff like that. And then like you could also do it where like, cause like studying for like a certain topic is different for like another, like you're gonna study for math really than like science or English. So like whatever cap or AP courses you're in, like that first week, maybe the teacher could highlight what they think would be most effective for their class. And then like also beyond that, like in college, like with their experiences. So you could like break it up into each like math, science, English, something like that. Cause it, it is like different for each, it's not like it's just like a general way of studying.
Especially for like math and stuff, you can't really just read something to study for math, you have to do math versus like if it's a history class, a lot of the times you can just like read and memorize, so I agree.
Thank you for those suggestions.
Sure. I'd like a follow-up to that, Dr. uh, to Steve Johnson's question of what we can do for students who might be struggling. And actually, um, moving up a broader perspective on something that you said, Hannah, that you observed that there were teachers and adults in the school district who helped you realize things about yourself that you didn't even realize yourself. Can you describe that process in a way that all that might have worked and if that's something with the?
Yeah, um, so it was actually, or, she came and found me freshman year and she's like, hey, I want you to come speak for me um, for FFA and I came into, I'm like, I don't know what FFA is, I don't know what that means and she's like, that's okay, I'll take you under my wing, so um, I would definitely say she's one of the most influential people in the high school for me. Um, because she worked with me and I did speaking competitions for FFA and went to nationals for that and that was really awesome, but I don't know, I think it's, I know you can't, like not every teacher is gonna affect every single student and have a close relationship with them, but every, or all the teachers coming together are gonna create that web to catch all the students. So if, if teachers like pick, not that you wanna pick favorites, but like, um, be able to do certain students where they're able to highlight and really affect their lives and hoping that the other teachers will kind of come along and affect the others, if that makes sense. But, um, just making sure that you, as a teacher, with your students, you're, you're pushing them to their full capability. That you're pushing them to their full potential and not letting them slack off or letting like a zero go as kind of Nicole was saying, that making sure that you're holding your students accountable um, to their actions and therefore making them better in what they're doing. So I don't know if that really answered the question, but just kind of making sure that, um, I, I know it goes back to students as well, making those connections with teachers and kind of seeking that out. But it's, for me, it's been very beneficial to have people just kind of come underneath and and build me up and draw out those qualities that I really didn't see in myself, um, personally, so.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your insights. I appreciate your insights. They're very helpful. We're all proud of you.
Thanks.
You both did a good work.
Thank you.
Did any of you attend any meetings?
You mean a school session? Yeah.
With that, then, upcoming meetings and other activities, Thursday, January 14th, that's this coming Thursday, is the Personnel Committee at 6:00 P. M. in this room, and then the following Tuesday, Personnel Committee will meet again.
At what time?
6:00 P. M.
Will those be long meetings, do you think?
I always say those meetings are as long as you make them last. I would say you should set aside two hours.
Both times?
Yeah, both times.
And which of those two are we meeting with, Mr. what?
The first one, 14th. Don Stevens. Sandy will go over what we're going to do at those meetings in, in her report.
It's going to take us two hours to go over what we're going to do.
I have to be home by midnight.
The School Board Convention is coming up next week, January 20th through the 22nd, and we have three members attending, Pat Baer, Sandy Robinson, and Stacey Hamble. Our next board meeting is Tuesday, February 9th, and then there is a WSB Legal and Human Resources Conference coming up, and that information was in your packet, and I have it up here as well. So if you're interested in attending that, just let me know. That is in the Wisconsin Dells, and there's, there's an agenda there as well.
Do you have the information on that?
I do, yes, it's here. It's, it's in the packet.
It's in the Dells, it's coming up in February.
It's a Thursday and a Friday. Okay, so take a look at that and let, let us know. We did the Finance Committee, so that takes us to Sandy.
Sandy?
All right. So I'll start by just talking a little bit about what we're going to do this Thursday when we meet with Don Stevens at 6:00. The first part of the meeting is going to be in open, let's see, that's true, I'm looking at my wrong agenda. It's an open session, and it's to talk about criteria for selecting candidates to be interviewed. And at your places tonight, you will find what I hope will be a helpful discussion tool, a point of departure for discussion on Thursday. And it's basically a list of potential criteria. These are drawn from our District Administrator job description, for the most part, some of our policies, and then some goals that we have outlined. Let's say, as far back as 2005, we used on an evaluation tool that didn't seem outdated at all, but primarily, these are lists of things that we've said we'd value and want to see in our district administrator. And so this, what I, what I'm asking board members to do, and I'm sorry that I couldn't get this to you sooner, but just look at the criteria and indicate whether or not you think these are must haves for anybody that you'd like to see as district administrator, or whether there are some things that they might not have fully developed, they could learn more on the job about, and it would still be acceptable, and then some things that are nice to have, but they certainly would never be a deal breaker.
So you want us to, to fill this out, so to speak, and bring it next Tuesday?
Well, actually, what I'd like you to do, and this is asking a lot, I know, is to...
I mean, by Thursday, this week?
Get it to by noon Thursday, then I would collect them. And, and Dr. Peschall's going to send it to you digitally, if you prefer to do it that way, so you can just put a... You can send it back to me, or I'll pick them up in the district and try to compile them, and then have the compilation ready, so that you'll have all that information, too.
Do you, do you want us to make any suggested changes on any of the questions, or are things...
You can, you can add things, sure, just, yeah.
Okay, anything, okay, so just a working copy?
It's, yes, it's really, it's a start, a starting point for discussion, and we've sent a copy to Don Stevens as well. You'll notice the, the last section addresses personal characteristics, and the first, well, 11G are things that are really modeled after what we said are our N's policies, the things that we're asking of our, our students and staff to do. And then H through M are just my own thoughts, so feel free to add your own thoughts, too. I personally like having something like this when I'm going into a discussion as a reference point. And then we can talk later about whether you would find it valuable, because the next step after that, then we're going to adjourn into closed session and meet with Don Stevens to review the applications. He's going to review the applications and make some recommendations about, you know, classifying those A, B, or C, or other, in terms of recommendations for, recommendations for whether we conduct an interview with people. But we're not going to take any committee action, because none of us have seen the interview or the applications or, or seen applicants. So between, so on Thursday night, we'll have that meeting, and then the applications will be available for our review, starting, is it Friday morning?
Yes, the, the very next morning.
The very next morning, and then also Monday and Tuesday.
Correct.
And then we're going to meet again Thursday, no, is it Thursday, Tuesday, January 19th, to, in closed session, to talk about, review the district administrator applications, and see if we can determine which of the candidates we'd like to interview. And then adjourn into open session to talk about whether we'd like to continue engaging Don Stevens to assist us with the rest of the process, or whether we would like to take over from there.
So in a nutshell, this document will guide your discussion on Tuesday, just to say, this is what we think is important. Then when you go through the, the applications on Friday through Tuesday, we'll use the results of this as a guide to say, yeah, set it up into three groups, will, Group A, Group B, and a group R, so to speak. And then you'll meet on Thursday, combine all your thoughts on the groups A, B, and C, and come up with a final list for interviews.
Dave, are you going to go on a beat up?
No.
Question, yes. On Friday, Monday, and Tuesday, what times will these be available?
Well, the thought is that you would come in here, and Linda Hozell will have them in the office, or go directly to her office, she'll give them out, and you'll go into their room across from the, we've got a small meeting room across from the office. So they'll be available from 7:30 to 4:00. And if you want later than that, that's fine, too.
I'll have to figure out something, because I will...
I'll have to work with you during the week.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I will work something out, and they're available over the weekend, too, if somebody wants to take them over the weekend, we can do that, too.
Oh, we can tape them, or?
Over the weekend, I'd rather they be here Friday, Monday, and Tuesday, so people come in, even if they're two or three at one time, you can still meet in that room and go, go through them, but if you're, if you need to take them home, take them over the weekend.
But there won't only be one copy of each?
Yes, correct.
And then just, just as a matter of course, I'd just like to stress how confidential all this will be, too.
Yeah, if I could just, for a minute, there are a bunch of rumors out there about people saying who's going to be interviewed, who's not going to be interviewed. The truth is that you, nor I, even know who's applied yet. And it's very, it is confidential, those who have applied, some may not want other people to know that they've applied, and letting that information out is a liability for, for the district. So like I say, there are rumors out there flying that certain people are going to be interviewed, and for the record, you don't know who's even applied yet, you haven't had that meeting yet, you'll know that on Thursday.
I must be out of the loop, because I haven't heard that.
I haven't either.
I haven't either.
Then you're out of the loop, I guess.
Yeah, we're out of the loop.
So just be very careful, is what I'm suggesting.
The very first one on here holds a current license. I don't know what, obviously, they don't have to, right?
Look, the question you're, it just, that's a good example, and holds a, is that important to you, that they hold a license right now, or is it that they could work their first year with getting a license, you know, getting a temporary license and working towards a certification? Will you require, is it very important to you that first person comes in licensed, or is it okay if they come in unlicensed, spend the first year taking courses in order to get certified?
How long can they work without a license?
Does that have to the district to determine?
Is it?
There's some flexibility there.
Okay, see, I don't, I don't know, I don't know that anybody else really knows what those qualifications are, I wouldn't know really.
Well, you want me to tell you how to fill it in, then?
Yeah.
Save us a lot of trouble here.
Is it true, though, Dave, on that first one, that, that the administrative license these days is, it's recommended for a PhD?
No.
No.
No, there's a specialist license. All you, you need a specialist degree in order to get the license, and that's a little bit beyond a master's degree.
Okay, so it's not a PhD requirement?
PhD is not a requirement, nor a Ph.D. is not a requirement, no.
Specialist, is that a superintendent license, or what is that?
It's a license, it allows you to be a superintendent.
Okay, so that comes first.
If you go that route, you can skip that and go right to the PhD and get your, your district administrator license. Specialist allows you to be an administrator, does anybody know how that works? But you can have a specialist and be an administrator, and get a license to be an administrator. I don't have a specialist degree, I have a PhD, which allowed me to get a license.
So if you have a PhD, do you automatically qualify for a license if you, you have to...
If it's in the right...
If it's in education, let's just say, right?
Right, yeah.
So then it's just application for the, for the license?
Right.
Or did anybody know you skipped a stepboard, and we heard?
We didn't hire him.
He went right to the top and then got his way down.
Let's move on.
That was only the first one? Yeah, we're in trouble.
So you'll get these digitally, if you want to return them digitally to Dr. Peschall, I'll, I'll grab them, and, and I certainly don't need to know who's filling them out, it's just a matter of...
I'll have them to you, as soon as the meeting's over, I'll send them out digitally.
Thank you.
Put the times that you want on them, when you want them back.
I'll, I'll put that in the email, yeah, okay.
School visits. School visits. Well, I had a school visit, I'll do real quick up here, I went to, because I'm kind of anxious to find out the answer to my question, I went over to the WLC just prior to Christmas, walked through, and had a great time, wishing lots of people happy holidays and Merry Christmas and all of that sort of thing. But I had a chance to, through Mr. Earthbauer reminding, not reminding, telling me that they had a big contest for all of their doors to their rooms in terms of decoration, and I saw, I think, all of them, or most all of them, but I didn't hear who were the big winners, or maybe you can fill us in on who the winner was in that.
So where was Mr. Matt Loanzak? His Grinch or down in the art department?
I was going to say that's the art department.
Okay.
What a surprise.
There were a lot of them that referenced Frozen, which I'm not real familiar with, my grandkids came with me, and they knew all about them, but there were a lot of Frozen ones in there, it was a movie, a lot of them. But they're really, really colorful, a lot of fun, saw a lot of interesting things, so that's what I did just prior to Christmas.
I had a visit, too. I was scheduled to go to the East Wing of the Waring Center today, which would be Camp Group Two, and so I did, I, I had a great visit. I went at like 1:30, and there were a lot of specials going on at that time, so there were actually teachers in classrooms without students, so I had a nice opportunity to talk with several of the teachers. I think one of the things that came out of it is, is they're all very much sent by Dr. Peschall. And they've realized that we're a great district, that there's such a nice rapport with the board and administration and the teachers, and they're very anxious that, about who we'll get, and very hopeful that the climate in this district continues. So they were very grateful for everything that's been done, and I, you know, I think sometimes you don't realize what you have until you don't have it. And so they're, they just all expressed their desire that we really tried to give the best we could, whatever, so it was very heartfelt, and I would ask them to...
Thank you very much.
So having said that, I visited the occupational and physical therapy department, I had never done that before. There were no students there, but we chatted a lot about their increasing numbers and the demands that they have, how much they love what they do, and it was a great room, and I, I met with both the OT and PT and their aides, so it was really a fun conversation. I visited the Title One Math with Elizabeth Kertschmar, and it was interesting, she was so excited when I walked in the room, that she said she had never been visited by a school board member before, because we all tend to go to the classrooms or whatever, that sometimes the specials get overlooked, so. She was doing an awesome lesson today with four little kindergarten kids, and I was just amazed at some of the skills that she was doing with those students, and more important was manipulatives, that she had to work with them, and beads, and magnets, and boards, and just fun things that, I mean, they were having fun with math. I don't remember that, I remember flashcards, and there were no flashcards. She was accomplishing the same thing that we did with those flashcards, with, with fun things and gadgets and things. She just did such a great job with them, so it was really fun to see math be a fun tool. I visited one of the classrooms, Claire Ellis' class, and they were so excited, they were making penguins. And they're excited because once a month they go to the veterans' home, and they visit with veterans, and so they were all making penguin scarf on them to give as a gift to one of the veterans, and so they were looking forward to their visit, their monthly visit. This morning, they had just done their bi-monthly visit, where they go down to Cape Four, and they read with a little reading buddy and do an activity with them, so. I, I was just so impressed that we have that one-on-one relationship that gets the kids out of the classroom, gets that service-minded thing into their heads, and the kids, the second graders were so proactive, so they could read books to a four-year-old kindergarten kid. So anyway, went to some of the kindergarten classrooms, they were all doing centers and whatever, so it was a really great visit, and I, again, that school isn't that cool, it was after lunchtime, the floor was clean, tables up and down, and it was just really heartening to, to see the teachers, and how grateful they are for living out. So, thanks, great opportunity.
Next item is School Board Candidates, and there are three candidates for two positions, the two incumbents, Kristen Greenfield and Connie Baldwin, and challenger Stephen Hackett. Next item then is Administrator, the, remember, I pulled out the revised policy 422, our one public school open enrollment. At your place is a letterhead from this Markon, it looks like. At your place is a letterhead from this Markon, it looks like, of this. There is a state law change regarding open enrollment and special ed students, and the requirement at the January meeting is to set the capacity for your special ed program, so that if someone tries to open enroll into the district, and you say you don't have capacity to take that student, you have to have documented that at the January board meeting. So that's the intent of this document, is to tell you at the different levels and in some programs, let you know what our capacity is. We still welcome all open enrolled students. We don't want to put a limit, but sometimes we have to, in terms of hiring, having people to serve those students. If we take an open enrollment student, we become responsible for providing a pretty appropriate education for them, so, so we have to be staffed for it. So I'd ask for a motion, the rest of the policy creates some changes relative to the funding of open enrollment, special ed students. In the past, there was a, the receiving district had to put together a cost estimate for how much it was going to cost the sending district. Now they made a scholarship, so to speak, it's $12,000 for every open enrolled special ed student. The, well, Ms. Markon and I were at a presentation on Friday, and there's some, the concern about this legislation is that open enrollment also applies then to our private schools as well. And so if an open, if a special ed student goes from a packet to a private school, there will be an exchange of $12,000 as the tuition that goes to that private school, but there's no requirement that the private school has to provide for the disabilities of that special ed student. So the fear is that schools will take on special ed students, get the $12,000, which is more than what they would get from an open enrollment, not provide services to that student, and then eventually, we get that student back after there have been some negative consequences for not providing the, so it's political, but this is what we have to do in order to protect ourselves and to put the policy in place.
Just a comment on that, Dave, I don't know if you saw, there was just an article about that in the paper recently, because exactly as you said, that money follows the student going to a school, but if the school doesn't have proper facilities like ADA and so forth, that the legislature is now looking to maybe revise that law to say that it has to have certain specifics for that particular child. It hasn't become law yet, but they're sort of onto the fact, maybe they do have to do something in order to accept that.
The catch is that a parent can say, yes, I have a special ed student, but I'm not going to require that you provide the services. So there will be ways around it. Again, it will be determined by the courts, eventually.
Just a quick question about the numbers. So I see, for example, the high school special ed has, like, predictable enrollment of 73 and open seats of 87, so the difference is 14. But the occupational therapy only has five, might some of the people who are wanting to enroll the high school special ed also need occupational therapy, and what happens if you have room, if one, for one criteria, they're not given?
We would have to deny.
You'd have to.
Right, yes.
Are these numbers that the predictable numbers, are those based on DPI sort of formulas?
They are not, DPI does not dictate a formula, they have recommendations, but they're also based on how many staff members, teachers, and aides that we have, but the predictable number is casting our current enrollment forward. That's, that's how we predict how many are going to be in that program, so that means we would have that many open seats.
I realize if we go over the number of seats we have, then there's by policy, a lottery, to see who, if we're, we are not obligated to extend the number of seats we have, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
So is there a point at which...
Unless they were our students, then we would, but not for...
But not for...
I want to make a change to this, I didn't get to look at this, that's not correct. The, if you look at the capacity in elementary and middle school, it's 131 and 95. The, what it says on here is that we have 87 open seats in high school special education. I think that should, the title, the heading should be capacity, not open seats. The capacity was not carried down to the, the original report...
That went to hold true for the other two.
It went for the other two. We originally talked about open seats, and I met with Marie this afternoon and said we really don't, open seats can change from one year to the next, capacity is the more constant number. So wherever it says open seats below should say capacity. We'll correct that for the record, so we'll have that, if you would correct your own right now, but the record will show capacity, not open seats. That's good, I'm glad we caught it, I was...
That's how I read it.
Has capacity.
Yeah.
Well, that's how I was explaining it, and all of a sudden, I saw that, that's not what it says.
You have to bring cookies next month, to get passed, okay.
So, we'll need a motion then, in a second.
Motion?
Removing approval of that policy, then?
Yes, and the policy will include the capacity.
And motion with the policy, is that the one with the school opening enrollment procedures?
Yes.
Okay. 422-R1 Public School Open Enrollment Procedures will include the capacity information.
Second.
Your voice, man.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you very much. That will protect us down the road. Brings us to the consent agenda, and I would like to pull out and recognize one of the retirements there, Coach Kronkowitz has announced his retirement as football coach, or resignation retirement as football coach, and I know Pat, you wanted to say a few words.
Well, yeah, did you want to say something first?
No, go ahead, I just...
Okay, well, I just wanted to make sure that we acknowledge John's career here, I think it's pretty obvious that his departure will leave big shoes to fill. He's done a great job in this district, and certainly, we, most of us here have attended games and/or seen articles in the newspaper or on the news featuring John and his success with his teams, but I thought it was important just to mention that he spent, is it 40 years? 41?
Coaching is 40.
Forty. Forty, I think he started, yes, 40 years. He and I coached, are taught almost the same years, he was here a year earlier or two, and then, of course, I retired a little earlier. But I think the greatest accolade that I could say about John, and he would, I'm sure, appreciate this, I had five children who attended Waupaca High School during his reign, three girls and two boys, not one of them played football. But when I asked them today, all of them, to a person, would say that John was one of their best teachers. I think we forget sometimes that his football is what most people recognize, but his day-to-day work with students of all stripes is second to none. He's been one of the real stalwarts at Waupaca High School for the last four years, and I think that that needs to be brought out over and over again, because much as sports brings a lot of attention, it still deals with a small segment of our population, and John has never forgotten on a daily basis that he is a teacher for all his students, and that's a great tribute.
Well said, I would concur, yeah.
Could it prove that he's not retiring from teaching? Or is he...
We don't know that yet.
Okay.
I was using, no, we have nothing saying that he is...
Because that wasn't in the article or in the paper, I think, to have a certain...
Correct. This is his retirement from coaching.
Correct.
Yes. Motion second, and I'll do the roll call for the consent.
Motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
And roll call, Betty Mannion?
Yes.
Pat Baer?
Yes.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Stephen Johnson?
Yes.
Kristen Greenfield?
Yes.
Connie Baldwin?
Yes.
And Stephen Shamble?
Yes.
I think that covers everything, yes.
Let's see, it says adjourn at 7:05.
Well, you failed.
Again. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.